Aster, will you? Okay.
Sure.
Alright, are we ready? Everybody down there? Good to go? Alright. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Aster will read our mission statement this evening.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Aster. Alright, item A on our agenda this evening is an Orange Elementary student travel to Washington DC. We're gonna kinda wrap it up into a celebration as well as a board action, so I'm gonna go ahead and get the motion on the table and then I'm gonna invite my friends from Orange up here to talk about it. So the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve travel for four Orange Elementary students and Stacy Snyder to travel to Washington DC, May 19th through the 23rd of 2019.
Some more.
Thank you. And discussion, I'd love to ask Ms. Snyder to come up and her students to come up to the microphone, please. And let's tell you, is Principal Hart here?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see her. Where is she? Oh my gosh, you can come up too, Principal Hart. I'm sorry, Sunny, here I am, so rude. I didn't, I really did not mean to see you. Okay, so I'm gonna turn them, I'm gonna be quiet, I'm gonna turn the microphone over and I want you guys to tell us about this awesome trip that you get to take.
I'll just give the quick background on what it is and then I'll let them, because it's their show. I have become connected with National Geographic quite heavily here in the last three years. I'm a National Geographic certified educator, and they had approached Iowa teachers with the idea of joining a geo-challenge with the theme being tackling plastics this year, and how can we keep plastic from the ocean? So I proposed it to the kids. It was for 5th through 8th grade teams of up to six kids, and these four came up with an idea and I'm gonna let them tell you about it and how it became a really cool thing. I like to pioneer new projects, so it was an easy one for me, because this is new for Iowa, and actually it's the first national competition for National Geographic, so it's very exciting.
You can bend it down.
Hi, I'm Sam.
I'm Adrian.
I'm Claire.
One problem that we face as a community is the over-usage of plastic. One of the main contributions to this is the over-usage of plastic straws. While we were researching how other people have helped, we saw a website called One Less Straw. This website challenges you to use alternatives to plastic straws such as metal straws. Since we wanted to start locally, we decided to look at our school. At our school, they service plastic packets that have a plastic wrapping, a plastic spork, a plastic straw, and the plastic wrapping, which is a lot more plastic than we intended on getting rid of in the first place.
Our solution to this problem was to eliminate all of those plastic packets and replace them with metal utensils.
Our plan to making this happen was first we had to meet with our principal, Ms. Hart. At that meeting, we discussed our proposal. She was all for the idea, but sadly, we could not do it alone. So she discussed with us to make a meeting with Heather Bathin, Director of Food Services in our community. At Heather's meeting, we discussed our proposal again. She was also all for the idea, and she even had enough in stock. A couple weeks later, we were unpackaging them. We later discovered that it actually costs less to use metal utensils rather than using plastic packets.
Our goal for the end of this year is to eliminate as much as plastic as we possibly could, and since two weeks ago, we have already eliminated 213 pounds of it.
We challenge you to take the no-sacks challenge.
Substitute plastic straws for metal ones.
Always refuse plastic straws at restaurants.
Carry around a reusable bag and straw.
And save the ocean.
If L-O-V-E though C-E-A-N, love the ocean, you gotta S-A-V-E though C-E-A-N, save the ocean, save the ocean.
What we would like to do is switch all of the elementary schools in the district to metal straws, just like we did, because, to metal utensils, just like we did, because the judges wanted us to make a higher impact, a higher impact for the national competition. And we also just had a conversation with one of the, the...
Kingsley.
Kingsley, with a Kingsley teacher and their lighthouse students, and talked about them switching to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
We have a couple questions, you guys. Hey, wait, 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 come back up here. I promise we're really nice, but we do have a lot of questions, so come back here.
Kay, you said that you guys found a savings from using the plastic utensils, so how much a savings, and how did you figure that out?
We're still doing the math on that, but...
You went to full life.
Yeah.
So what would be the cost that you think you should include when you did, do the cost comparisons?
You all can talk.
Well, we haven't actually done the cost comparisons yet either, but...
What would you, how would you get to that, do you think? How'd you put that together?
Well... Heather Bathin gave us a number.
Okay, that's great.
You know, I just wanted to say happy Earth Day and congratulations on making it this far. That's a very good accomplishment, so I'm very proud of you all. And just know that when, you know, when you get asked difficult questions by people, it's okay to say, you know, we're still working figuring that out at this time. That's a good way to answer that.
And I think you guys should look into trying to put together a way in which, how you did this at Orange, so that you, when you said you met with Kingsley, so that you can meet with all the other elementary schools, and you've got a plan and a step-by-step thing that they could each follow to make this happen in their schools. Kinda like a toolkit for No Plastic.
Well, one of the things we did was, well, the other groups there, they made models and they made inventions, but none of them actually did something to affect the getting rid of it, so... That's one of the things.
To upscale it by bringing it to other elementaries.
So that's, you guys are obviously still working on that piece.
Yeah.
Great.
And do you know what, what that's called? That's called sustainability. So again, I'm very proud of you all for thinking forward on that also. Thank you.
I can, when you are ready to do your cost analysis, I just want to give you something to think about as you go home tonight. When you're, you're thinking about how much money you might be saving, like if you're not buying straws and whatever, but there would be a certain amount of cost upfront with buying, like if they didn't have forks, you would have to buy forks, right? So you would look at that. Then the other thing that you're gonna have to look at is what happens occasionally to the forks when they're real forks? What happens to them with the kids? They do get thrown away, and for those of us who have been a building principal, I remembered when we had real forks, you had to stand by the garbage cans, say, and our, at one point in time, our cooks counted them, and so they could say, "We're missing 42 forks today," and so we would start digging for the forks to find the forks. And it's not a fun part of the job, but we did have to cost that out, so those are all the conversations I'm guessing you probably will have in your, in your group before you go, go on to your next competition, right? So those are great things, great presentation, and I love the song.
Yeah, the song is great. Will you guys promise you'll keep us updated on how well you do and have a super safe trip? Is there anything further? Alright.
Just, I, one thing, when you said get rid of plastic bags, if you guys could come up with an invention to how you get your parents or whomever you live with and all of us to remember to bring your plastic bag. Somehow, because I have bought 50 plastic bags and I always forget them, so...
I leave mine in my car. Okay. Thanks, you guys. Thank you, Ms. Snyder, for being here. Thank you, Ms. Hart. Yay! Okay, so with that, I suppose we oughta vote so we can actually send them, so all those in favor of sending these Orange Tigers out to Washington DC, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carrying. Again, have a great trip, you guys. Alright, the next item on our agenda is Exhibit B, and this is actually a board celebration. This is, our Lowell Elementary family is here this evening. I know that, I'm gonna let them tell their story, but for our, for our general viewing public who doesn't know that their roof had a collapse in February, we are here tonight to let them tell us their story of the transition between that and their new building. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tara Thomas.
Thank you. We would just invite Carrie Heinzlerling, the Lowell principal, and some of her staff to come up and give us an update on how things are going now that you guys have gone through quite the transition moving into a temporary building. Carrie, come on up.
Well, first of all, obviously you know that back on February 20th, one of the classrooms in our building, the roof collapsed, and you know, fortunately, we were able to find a place to move to, and with the outpouring of support from our community, we are up and running and doing extremely well. We've definitely found our niche, you know, we had a couple of hiccups here and there, busting has been a little bit different in the morning, but you know, overall, things are going really well. We are, you know, on track. Our goal number one being that we get back to education as quickly as possible, because we know that that is one of the most important things that we can give to our students. And so I'm actually going to turn it over to Mrs. Byers, one of our first grade teachers, and she's gonna share a little bit of information with you.
I'm not gonna be near as good as the Orange, I had to make notes. So, um... I do not, I could, had I, had I been more prepared, I probably could've, but you guys would've asked me to stop, so. Mrs. Heinzlerling put out an email asking us if we would be able to attend and if somebody would be willing to speak on the school's behalf, and I, for whatever reason, did that. So I just wanna thank you all for inviting us here to be able to give an update to what's going on. I am only one member, obviously, of the amazing team that we call Lowell, but there are so many people, organizations, and businesses that we need to thank that stepped up and helped us all along the way. Since this happened, it doesn't seem like it was already in February. First, thank you to the Cabinet of the Waterloo Schools. I know those 24 hours after the roof collapsed, you worked tirelessly with Carrie. We had a plan in place within 24 hours of where we were gonna go. No, not all the kinks were worked out or anything like that, but we at least knew where we were gonna be, which quickly decreased some of the anxieties of the staff. And a special thank you to Dr. Lindeman, Mr. Hannah, Mrs. Thomas, Cora Turner for helping us move boxes, rescuing items from our old school, moving furniture, checking in with us all the time to see how we were, not only what do you need, but how are you emotionally doing? What can we help you with? Greeting our students on the first day back, they were there. I know Dr. Lindeman was out at the door talking to families as they were dropping their kiddos off, and organizing all the donations that we got from organizations. The IT Department of the Waterloo Schools was incredible. For those two or three days when we started moving in, they were there longer than we were probably making sure that our internet worked, our printers were hooked to our computers, all of our computers were functioning. We had projectors, although we don't have Promethean boards, we at least had projectors to project onto walls or screens. I know it was not easy for them, but they made it so much easier for us to get back into the swing of things, get right back to business as usual. The maintenance staff was another group that just went above and beyond. They put together a lot of new equipment, they put together shelves, they put together carts, they put together basketball hoops, because we don't have a playground per se anymore. They came out, they covered our fire alarms, they put up clocks, because we didn't have clocks in the rooms, all those things we don't think about when we walk into our school building. I can't tell them how much we appreciated everything they did, and I know there's things we don't even know that they did behind the scenes. The organizations, the businesses, the people that went above and beyond with money, with food, with furniture. We had lunch brought in for the first whole week we were back, we had donuts for breakfast a lot of days. There were people coming around with carts when we were working with water and snacks, so that we didn't even have to worry about any of that, and we could just focus on getting classrooms set up and being ready for kids when they walked in that Wednesday. We put out a call, we said, "Oh my gosh, we don't have any shelves here." Instantly, within the hour, we had people bringing in shelves we could put together. We needed electric pencil sharpeners, they don't have pencil sharpeners on the walls like we do. Here comes boxes of pencil sharpeners, it was just truly amazing. Whatever we asked for, somebody answered it, and we don't even know who all those people are. I know there's a wonderful spreadsheet that Pam was keeping, but as I was looking through it, it was totally, totally overwhelming. Every Waterloo Elementary and Cedar Falls Elementary donated something, did a book drive for the classroom that lost everything, brought in food for the staff, brought snacks, brought indoor recess games and puzzles and things we could do until we got all those things in place. They were sending cards to our kids, saying, "Hey, we're thinking of you, enjoy your new school." They were sending emails to teachers, just telling them, "We're thinking about you, we can't imagine what you're going through, but we know you got this." Volunteers, we had people from all over coming in, helping us carry our boxes in from our cars of personal belongings that we rescued, and it was icy in our parking lot and it was cold that day. They never once complained. They were helping us move boxes, they were helping us put up bulletin boards. They sorted school supplies, as Tara can tell you, we had so many school supplies and they sorted those, and each student that came to Lowell had a brand-new box of school supplies to come back to. We were able to rescue most of their things, but each kid, no matter what, had a box of pencils and scissors and crayons and colored pencils, and so they walked in and they didn't have to worry about whether their stuff was saved or not. Volunteers put all of that stuff together, as well as we still have volunteers every day that come to Lowell at the end of the day and just hold the door as the kids are getting on the buses. And you know, just to have a good evening, see you tomorrow. I wish some of those volunteers could've been in our classrooms that first day back, because the kids were so excited to see their new school and be back with their friends, and their excitement was just contagious with everybody in the building. It was amazing. Can't say enough to our administrators through this whole process. They were patient with us, they listened to our concerns and our fears and anxieties. If we needed something, they're like, "We'll get it, don't worry about it, we've got it covered." If we didn't have curriculum, they're like, "We'll get ahold of who we need to get ahold of." If we didn't have whatever, it magically appeared. And I personally can't imagine how many hours they put in behind the scenes to make all those things happen and to make it easier for us, so we could just focus on getting things in our classroom ready for those kiddos to walk in the door. We would not be where we are right now if we didn't have the leadership, both central administration at ESC and our Lowell leadership. And last, and most importantly, is our friends, is our students and our families. As Carrie said, there's been some bumps in the road, the busting was not perfect, it's still not perfect, but our parents, for the most part, have been so very patient and understanding and concerned right along with us, and once they knew their kids were safe and we were all gonna be in one building as a family, a lot of their concerns and fears were, were put on the wayside too, but they have stood with us and behind us this whole entire process, and we can't ever thank them enough, because I can only imagine the anxiety they went through when they found out, "Oh my gosh, my school that my children go to is gonna be closed." I know that I've taken a lot of your time, and I'm sure that I have forgotten somebody in all of that, because there were so many people to thank, and that old saying that it takes a village to raise a child truly applies here, because without the Waterloo Schools and the Cedar Valley, we wouldn't be where we are, and the Waterloo Schools and Lowell are two of the best villages we could ever have to help us through this whole process and support us and our kiddos. So from me, as one person from the Lowell District, thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts for all the support you've given us.
Now, don't say that, you're a really hard act to follow. I'm telling ya. So actually, we have a little something for our Lowell family tonight, so just stay right there for half a minute, I'm gonna send Dr. Lindeman out.
And actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read something from here. First, I wanna ask, is there, did you have other people who wanted to speak, Carrie?
Oh yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Chris was our designated speaker for the evening, but if anybody else would love to...
Don't be shy!
Well, we actually wanted to do a little surprising as well from our end, and so we, we have something, that we go around, we do high-flyer awards, and we really wanted to give a high-flyer award to the three fearless leaders who really worked through, and every single person sitting in the audience, and those who are not also deserve this, but tonight, we're just gonna focus on Carrie and Adam and Annette, because we just know that you guys went also above and beyond, and I think you not only carried the burden of the work, but also the worry, and so we recognize that, and so we just wanna, I'm actually gonna, just from here, I'm gonna read it, and then we're gonna come down there and we're gonna present you, and Tara's gonna get some pictures, but I just wanna read something to you. So Manny Scott said, "Your attitude determines your altitude." Congratulations to Carrie Heinzlerling, Adam Aronson, and Annette Duncan for flying high for our district. These staff members were nominated, and people, this is what somebody said, "These three people were our rock during our move to our new location. They provided us with amazing support, they took all of the logistic requirements and time it took to enable our teachers to focus on our rooms and our students. They carried the burdens of organizing all the little details that often go unnoticed, yet a crucial, crucial part of our day. I never heard one of them say one negative thing, they were positive the whole way through, and I can, I can attest to that. Their actions and their words were positive and inspiring. The message each and every day was, 'We got this.'" They were true professionals, and this showed with interactions with staff, parents, volunteers, and students. They truly exemplified our, our logo, love leaves, leads Lowell. This is an amazing building and it starts at the top. They remember what it's like to be in the classroom and the concerns and the responsibilities that we as teachers and other staff have. We are truly blessed to have them at Lowell, and they are truly high flyers." So we won. So while it is not enough, it is just a symbol of our gratitude for all of the work, and I know because I would go at weird times of the day and you would all be there, and they were carrying boxes, and when I say they didn't complain, they did not complain, they just said, "We got this, here we go, we would change it if we could, but we can't, so let's move on." And I just really appreciated that, I think your, your leadership was very evident. So we are gonna come down and we're gonna present you with certificates, we have certificates just for the media, the people watching in the audience. We have certificates for each one of them, and then we also have a pin that has our logo on it, and it's just a symbol that we, we appreciate all that you do, and we're part, you're part of us and, and we're part of you, and we're thankful. Alright, so let's come down, shall we? We'll come down with you. So we're gonna come down.
Excuse me.
If we could, maybe, can we have you guys come up here? Can you come through the, can Tara complicate a little bit better picture? We can count, I'm right in the middle here. So I have a pin here, Carrie. Thank you. Thank you. And then we have a certificate. Carrie, the picture.
She never comes over to visit.
Could look at Pam and India, see, I'm moving. But, and I just wanted to add, you guys, with, with what she was saying and Carrie, it's just so awesome to see you, because she was my child's 4th grade teacher, and I've just seen her grow up and flourish, and it's kinda cool, but for the staff and what you said in your speech, one thing I just, I just have to reiterate on is the teamwork, that it took all those different people, you know, administrators, teachers, IT, everybody, and the teamwork. If we wouldn't have had great teamwork, it could've never happened, so. And I happened to run into a little kindergartner at Quickstar the night before, she was going back to walking with her mom, and she was talking about her new school, and I heard her talking, and she's, her mom was saying, "Are you scared?" And I said, "Are you going to new school?" And she said, "Yeah," and I said, "All your same teachers are gonna be there, all your same people, your classrooms are gonna be there, it's gonna be really cool," and she goes, "It is," and I said, "They've made it really cool for you." And she just beamed. So just to let you know that all those little hearts are just so thankful for what you guys all did in the teamwork that you wrapped around the whole district administration and, and departments and, and the community, because without the community, we couldn't have done it either. So, great work.
Thank you all, thank you, thank you so much.
All right, the next item on our agenda then is Item C, and this is another board celebration, and this is regards to Teacher Appreciation Week. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education proclaim May 6th through the 10th, 2019, as Teacher Appreciation Week in Waterloo. Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All right, and discussion, I'll turn it over to Tara Thomas again.
I'm back, to say we love teachers, there are hundreds in our district that we love and support. And we hope that we can give them some acknowledgement at least one time officially during the year. And we do this in a really unique way that is putting students at the heart of this generous donation. So I will have Pam Arndorfer explain how we're acknowledging Teacher Appreciation Week.
Right, so every year, you know, we get the books to put into the media centers at the, all the buildings. So this year, I reached out to the librarians, the teacher librarians, and got some input on what they would like in their buildings. So, all of our secondary schools are getting, it's called Bad Girls Throughout History. So it's about females throughout history that may have bucked the norms a little bit and done great and amazing things for us. So you guys can look at that. Elementary schools are all getting the book, The Undefeated. And this is, it's a poem, but it's throughout the book, it's talking about African-American history and some of the great leaders that we have seen throughout the African-American history as well. So elementaries are getting The Undefeated. And then our preschool buildings are getting a book called Black Belt Bunny. And it's about this little bunny who overcomes some adversity and finds out that he has some really good things to offer, so.
Thank you Pam, thank you Tara. I'll pass these books around, board members, you have to pay attention to me for a little bit longer and then you can all go read in the corner. So, can I, we do have this motion on the table, is there anything else that anybody wants to talk about with these books? All right, then all those in favor of approving Teacher Appreciation Week in Waterloo as May 6th through the 10th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then this evening is information from individuals and delegations. And, I'm sorry, Tara was walking up there and I thought, is she? No, no, actually, it's board celebration, sorry, sorry, I'm jumping ahead. And this is for School Board Recognition Month. And so I will turn it over to Tara, there is no actual motion with this one, I thought that was kind of funny, I was like, wait a minute.
You were just being humble and skipping the acknowledgement of yourself, Mrs. McNally. We want to acknowledge that the May month designated for School Board Recognition is upon us by the state of Iowa. And this year, the theme is Superheroes of Public Education. And we celebrate our board members annually with a luncheon, this year it's on May 9th. It is the West High Culinary Staff's turn to cater the luncheon for us. And we will be getting together to celebrate all of you, but we publicly wanted to acknowledge at tonight's meeting, your years of service. So I will say your name, and I would like you to stand if that works out, so that we can have the audience see who each of you is as your name is called. Shanley McNally has been a board member for 11 years and is currently in her sixth year as Board President, please rise to be recognized. Sue Flynn has been a board member for 10 years and is currently in her fourth year as Vice President of the Board.
What, read the book?
India Johnson, Ms. India Johnson has been a board member for two years. Jessie Knight has been serving for four years. Rhonda McReina has been a board member for four years. Aster Williams is serving his second year. And, thank you, and Lyle Schmidt is our longest-serving board member at 26 years, two of which he was Vice President of the Board. Thank you all for your service.
Thanks Tara. Okay, I didn't mean to jump the gun. Now, now we're to information from individuals and delegations. And so if there's anyone here who wishes to address the board this evening, I would ask that you come forward and state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to address the board, and at that point, I will ask you to conclude your public comments. I would also ask that you keep your comments respectful and constructive. We're all here with the, with the goal of trying to help our students. And I would also ask that you do not criticize the performance of specific employees as our personnel matters are private and must be, cannot be attended to in this public forum. So with that, I would invite anyone who wishes to come forward and address the board to do so. I guess I should have asked if there was anybody here before I did that whole thing. There is, all right.
Good evening, and before I start, I'll apologize, I have this cough.
Oh, you're all right. Can you get a little closer to the mic, is the light still on?
Yes.
Is it still green? Okay, then you're good.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, this past Thursday, there was an event at West High in which a student was forcibly taken down for whatever reason. The question that I have for the board specifically is why nothing has been communicated to parents, period. It's important that we get something. So I had a whole bunch of notes taken as to what questions could be asked. Specifically, you know, when an officer of the law is brought in to provide safety, is assaulted, what other student personnel steps in to remove that person who's been victimized, who can no longer de-escalate the situation? We set him up for failure. As a result, this young man was publicly assaulted in front of his peers and over 9.5 million people. I don't think it's too much to say, as a board and a district, here's what we know. There was an event that happened at West High, we are under an investigation, and as we have information we can share, we'll do that. Because in the absence of that, there's a void, where you have a lot of people who are already distrusting already, who have more distrust. Why aren't they sharing anything? After Thursday evening, I'm assuming something's going to come out on Friday. Nothing came out on Friday. Saturday, Sunday, we got a text message that school in Waterloo would be on because it's a makeup day. But we couldn't say anything about acknowledging this young man that he was assaulted, that we're taking steps to make sure whoever we put in these buildings to protect and serve our children when a crisis happens, has the training and the wherewithal to say, "You know what, I need to remove myself from the situation because I'm no longer effective." I don't know what training SROs have, I don't know how they're placed in specific schools. I don't know the relationships that the school staff who felt it was okay to restrain this young man in a three or four-point person restraint, said nothing of the officer punching this kid in the face. There were a lot of gaps that happened on Thursday. There were more things that could have been done that they aren't. And speaking specifically that you acknowledged that something happened would have been a great first step. Time?
You've got about 15 seconds.
Thank you.
Anyone further? All right, then we'll move on to our consent agenda this evening, which consists of five items. And those are the minutes of the April 8th, 2019 regular board meeting, which is Item E, the personnel appointments and adjustments, which is Item F, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, which is Item G, the Waterloo Career Center Furniture Bid Approval for Phase 2, Item H, and the Hoover Middle School HVAC Project Bid Approval, which is Item I. Can I get, actually, are there any items that members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item F.
Item F, okay.
Item I.
And Item I? And anything else? So then, can I get a motion to place Items E, G, and H on the table?
Some move.
Thank you Jessie, and a second?
Second.
All right, and all those in favor then of approving the minutes, the bills due and payable, and the Waterloo Career Center Furniture Bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to Personnel Appointments and Adjustments, which is Item F on page 15. And, let me get to that recommended motion, which is that the Board of Education approved the personnel items as listed.
Some move.
Thank you Jessie, and a second? Thanks Sue, and discussion, I know Sue, you had something, and somebody else might have too.
I just was wondering as far as if we have any gauge on retirements potentially within the district? And then also where we're at with the contract process, if you can share that? And just, you know, overall, general, nothing specific.
So as far as where we're at with our contract process, we're still working on that. We have a deadline of the end of this month to try to work something out, or get some, get the contracts out. And ultimately, I'm, you know, trying to get them out as quickly as possible. We're, we're walking through our protocol as far as that's concerned. My hope is to have something to share with the superintendent by the end of this week, just so that, just she's aware and we can move forward from that standpoint. In regards to retirements and resignations, we've had a number of them that have come before us. We're looking at, right now, around 30 or so resignations and retirements. There's more that's going to come, especially as you see, as we get contracts out as well, there's going to be a ton that come through at that particular time. And so we're ready for those, and we, and we're, one of the things you may not know is that, you know, as soon as everybody resigns or even retires, we send them an exit survey immediately, so they can tell us about, you know, their, their time with the district and ultimately, things that we can improve on as well. And so we're looking at how we can compile that data, and either, you know, share it with you or just have a deeper conversation about what we can do from a retention standpoint.
That's super, I think that's an excellent thing to do when they're leaving, and, you know, that's a huge retirement or resignation. It's, I guess, a non-threatening opportunity, even though they aren't ever threatened. But I think people feel that when they leave a place, they can be more transparent, I guess. And, and so I appreciate you doing that, and it would be, I'd like to hear once you have figured out how you're going to do that, and let us know, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Kinsley, I just have a quick question, does that include all contracts, non-teaching as well?
No, so, no, we're, we're focused right now on the teaching contract piece. My hope is, is that we can, okay, so there's a couple of pieces, you know, everybody doesn't necessarily have a contract. They have a letter of assignment, some of our certified, like our certified groups, our admin support groups. And so from that standpoint, we have a different deadline that we do to send those out. Right now, I'm focusing on getting teacher contracts out as soon as possible. And that matters just from the standpoint of, we're right in the thick of our hiring process and people graduating as well. Not to say that all those other positions are important, it's just hiring looks a little bit different.
And then, I'd just like to note that on this list, there's four certified hires for next year already. In key critical conditions, and I think that's really important to get those hires as, as soon as possible, so. Not sure how many more you have to go, but, but I certainly support the early hiring.
And I want to apologize, we're at 10 to 20 retirements and resignations, I was looking at the 17 to 18 chart. So 10 to 20 retirements and resignations.
Okay, perfect. And then, just one other question I had written down and I forgot to ask you, is like the leave of absences, I see that there's six teacher positions there. So do we do a long-term sub at this point, since it's close to the end of the year? Or how are those FMLA filled?
Yeah, part of it is via long-term sub. Unfortunately, sometimes it's sharing the dual responsibility with another teacher as well. You know, the hope is, is that the teachers in those positions will be back as soon as possible. As I look at, some of them, not all of them, are, you know, to the end of the school year. And so my hope is that we get them back as soon as possible, but normally, that is filled with a long-term sub. You just mentioned the 17, 18, was that at this time, or was that a full number? I don't know, I pulled, I just pulled up the wrong thing and was looking through it, and I was like, whoa, this is 17, 18. I don't know at this time, this was at the end of the year. So this is looking at all the resignations and retirements overall.
And Kingsley wasn't here last year, so we'll give you that.
But to Lyle's point, we're, we're doing what we can to, I mean, I just want to say kudos to our administrators. There was constant conversation, obviously, kudos to Superintendent Mohorn, or Assistant Superintendent Warren as well. She's doing a wonderful job, talking with them about staffing. You know, everybody feels like it really prepared. Now again, when the contracts drop, it's going to be a different conversation, I'm probably going to pull the rest of my hair out. But I think that from that standpoint, you know, we're, I can tell you Wes has done a wonderful job hiring people right away. Sunny, she was here, she was talking to me Thursday evening about staffing positions. I got an email from Kingsley and Jana, not me, but Kingsley Elementary, Jana, can't remember her name right away. And she was talking about, you know, "Hey, I have a, I have a large kindergarten class, what are we going to do for staffing?" And so everybody's eager, and everybody's working really hard on, you know, not only getting teachers in and interviewed, but just walking through, making sure, you know, especially my first time around, that they feel comfortable coming at least to me and talking about through the process.
All right, then all those in favor of approving the Personnel Appointments and Adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is Item I.
I move the Board of Education to accept the recommendation from Modus Engineering and approve the low base bid in addition to alternate number one and number two from Young Plumbing and Heating Incorporated for a total contract amount of $625,000 for the Hoover Middle School HVAC project.
Thanks Lyle, and a second?
Second.
Thank you Jessie, and discussion. I know Jake is here from Modus, and make your way up here, because I bet we got some questions, Jake.
I was wondering if you could share the analysis and the two alternatives, what caused you to recommend those on the control valves, I presume?
Well, alternate number one is for three air handling units, all of which are pneumatic controls currently. So it was updating those to be consistent with the other controls in the building, to go away from pneumatics. So totally trying to get rid of those throughout the school. Alternate two was for the unit ventilators within the classrooms and other spaces, most of which have already been replaced with digital controls. However, they're all in varying condition, and so, not knowing at the time if the project could support replacing all of them, we put it in as an alternate, and so we're pleasant to see that the bids came back favorable.
So are there a lot of pneumatic controls left?
I think for the most part, we would have gotten rid of most, if not all of them, there may still be some, but.
And then a follow-up on the analysis of putting in CO sensors?
Yeah, so we looked at making a modification to alternate number one, but it would have basically taken replacing the two unit, the two units that serve the auditorium to do that. And it pretty quickly became not cost-effective.
Because current units can't be controlled?
Well, they can be controlled, but the fans, the fans would have had to gotten swapped out. And there's other control components that would have had to have been taken out. It's not just as easy as putting a sensor in.
So was there a payback at all of doing that?
There, there really wasn't a payback. I think it would make more sense come time to replace the units, that you then consider doing that at that time versus doing it now just to implement the CO detection.
But there was savings.
There would be a savings, but the, the payback would not be there.
So the upfront is the savings, but the long-term, it's not like it's more efficient, is that what you're saying to me?
It, it would be more efficient, but the cost to implement it now, the payback would not be there. Unless you are already going to replace the equipment, which we were not planning to do as part of the project.
Do you recall what the cost of doing it and what the savings would be?
I, I don't, I don't recall the numbers.
Lyle, the other thing I want to just point out is that we've been talking about this project for a while in facilities, and I was very happy that we had four bids.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, I heard you say favorable, I just want to say it again, this was, was a very favorable bid for us. So I appreciate the fact that we had four of them, too.
Yeah, one other important thing to note is that Youngs is proposing to do all... Yeah, one other important thing to note is that Youngs is proposing to do all the work in a single summer and not two summers, so.
So, it's all one, it's compressed into one timeframe, yeah, which is great.
Okay. Yeah, I'm also happy we had that many bids and fairly competitive as well, so.
Yep. And I'd much prefer to do it in one summer than spread it out over two. I agree, so.
Which actually should help decrease the total cost if.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that may have been one reason why Young's bid was lower, because they were doing it in one summer. There's some work that they'd only have to do once versus twice.
Yeah, do it.
They've got the staff.
Yeah, they just throw a lot of guys at it.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else for Jake? All right, now that he's, now that I said, it's going away, all right, so, all right, then, all those in favor of approving the Hoover Middle School HVAC project bid approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carrying. That concludes our consent agenda and moves us on to our financial information, which is item J on page thirty-four, and I will turn it over to Michael Coughlin for that.
Just want to look at a couple of the financial reports, just to kind of keep you abreast of where we're at, at this time of the year. And if you look at page thirty-eight, this is the statement of revenues expenditures and then the surplus or deficit that goes with each of the funds and most of the first page is the general fund. Uh, on the left-hand side and then on the colors, you see how the current year compares. So, for the revenues, we have eighty-four and a half million in, which is a little bit higher than the last couple of years. And I will say that one of, one of the issues that has caused that is the federal system of paying money to schools through the state, like Title I. It comes from the federal government and we have several of grants under federal sources and in the past, it was kind of up to us of how we submitted claims to get that money. And some of them were just sent automatically. We didn't have to do a claim until the very end. This year, they have adjusted that, so every quarter, we have to send in, we have to send in a claim, so it does keep us more current with the money that we have coming to us. So, that's part of the reason, if you just look at the four thousand federal line, we have three point seven million in through the end of March and last year was two point seven and it was a little higher in fifteen and sixteen because they were sending us things automatically without. So, it's, so it's not comparing apples to apples when you look across. We had different vehicles of how we were getting that money, but things change all the time, as you well know. So, we have eighty-four and a half million in for revenue to this, to the end of March and if you look below into the expenditures, we have eighty-three point six million spent. So, if you look at the percentages of budget, we are within a percent of what we've done in the last several years, all in revenues and expenditures. So, we're on track of, of ending up close to where we were last year at the end of the year. And then, you look at the rest of page thirty-eight and the management and the save fund is listed there for revenues and expenditures and then PEPAL and nutrition and, um, internal services, which is the print shop that show up as minor funds. I also wanted to look at page forty, because when you look at page thirty-eight for the general fund, it doesn't give you the total budget. It just gives you by category what it is. So, if you look on page forty, that will give you that relationship. So, if you look on the left-hand box on the top, this is for seventeen eighteen through March of seventeen, then we had sixty-two point five five percent of our revenue in and sixty-one point four six percent of our expenditures. And when you look at that box, it's showing prior year to date, what has actually come in by the end of March and then the prior year actual is the whole twelve months. So, you can see of the total for revenue of a hundred and thirty-one million, we had gotten eighty-two by this time last year and same for the expenditures. So, if you look at the current year on the right-hand box on the top, we've gotten eighty-four and a half million of our hundred and thirty-four million expected revenues of sixty-two point six eight and we've spent eighty-three point six million of our hundred and thirty-five million in expenditures at sixty-one point eight eight. So, that's where those numbers are coming from. When you see how we've spent as a trend from year before, from the years before on page thirty-eight and then on forty, it gives you a relationship to the total budget, to the current time of year. If you want to really get into the details of it, the revenues expenditures are broken down in forty-one, forty-two and forty-three by every category. But to then kind of prove out the numbers that are coming, you can look at the graphs again on page forty-four and it's showing that we are following almost the exact same trends as we have in past years, except for the sales tax fund, because we are using a sales tax revenue bond to do the WCC project and finish that up. So, the actual revenue that's coming in for this year is just increasing our balance. So, it's up to about nine million dollars right now, but that gives us cash flow for possible projects in the future. So, as you look at those three particular reports, it kind of proves out that all of it is, the trend is stable and the percentage of budget spent is stable and the cash that's come in is mirroring, that's a hard word to say, the, the past years of, of trend. So, that's why we use different reports, so we can look at it from different directions and make sure that it all checks out.
Anybody have any questions for Michael? You know, I love it when there's colors on the graph. That's my favorite thing, so.
We'll keep working on that.
I appreciate the delineation there, thank you, so. All right, well, as this was for information only, there is no vote on that, so I will move on then to our superintendent's report. Dr. Lindeman?
Yeah, what I wanted to mention tonight was just that we have kicked off this week our, let me back up a little bit. A few months ago, we talked a little bit about Life Labs and the things that were happening this spring with our experiential service learning grant. And so, this week, we are looking at, we're gearing up for expanding that from the elementary to the middle school. And so, we've started meeting with our middle schools to talk a little bit about the grant that we received and the planning for next year for the experiences that middle schools can have, the middle school students and the high school, or, I'm sorry, the, and the service learning. So, it's been really fun to talk with the middle school staff about the curriculum and the connections with the curriculum and so, that's just a really, that's an exciting part going forward with the Life Labs. And of course, we're always grateful for McElroy Trust for providing that money for us. And then, the last thing I just wanted to talk about was the, the celebrations that we did earlier. We, I know we have things coming up and, and sometimes it's easier to talk about those after the fact, but with the, the teacher appreciation, well, actually, I think it's a week, but we'll celebrate it on a particular day. We are just so grateful to our teachers for the work that they do. It is, it is, it is a, a lot of work. It's a tough job and I just think that they work really hard. And my last celebration is just to make a comment about what the board, the board, I know we're having a luncheon and it'll be a great chance to share more with you at that time, but I'm just grateful for the board that is, is up here and the commitment that you have to our students just constantly. So, we will look forward to having a luncheon and to, I'll get a chance to share more of my gratitude even at that time, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna start down here to my left with India Johnson tonight. Ah, I think I have nothing. Okay. All right, that was fast. Okay, Jessie?
All right, well, I got the pleasure of visiting, uh, visit Pointer and Becker and Kettle last week while I was on vacation. And, um, great visits at each building and learned a lot from each building and it's great seeing a lot of things they do together, but then also some uniqueness of these buildings and some of their accomplishments, some of their challenges. Another thing, generally, you know, one of the questions I had was how testing go and pretty positive feedback on that they fought test well, they were prepared and, and so, I think it says lots of work done behind the scenes to get the district ready for that, so.
Thank you. Sue?
I got nothing.
India? I'm sorry, Rhonda! I looked at my cheat sheet wrong. That's okay, she's cute, I'll take her. I have to keep them there.
I thought you were talking to you.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Rhonda. Aster?
Nothing, nothing this evening.
Thank you, Aster. Lyle?
Oh, yeah, I'd just like to, again, congratulate the orange team on competing, number one, competing in the regional GIL challenge. All those opportunities that are available, the more we take advantage of them, there's, there's always a, a learning experience. In this case, even though it's elementary, I think, I think our advice to follow the cost analysis is, you know, I don't think they're too, too young for that and especially identifying the cost factors. You know, other people are gonna have to put what the real costs are and, but they can help determine the relevancy of those other, of those other costs, so I think that would greatly enhance their, their project, but, and it's not just, cost isn't the only factor, but one of the things I think that they'll learn is cost is always a factor and that you kind of need to know where you, where you land. In this case, if it's really less costly, it is sort of a no-brainer. On the other hand, if it's more costly, then of course, there's some other considerations come into play. So, that whole process. So, that's why it's important to, to engage in these competitions, 'cause that whole process is, is really a rich learning process or can be. So, congratulations to them, that's all.
Thanks, Lyle. I just want to echo, you know, teacher appreciation. I had the pleasure last week of being able to go on some Gold Star Teacher visits when we were able to surprise some of our staff that received the award and that doesn't happen until later in May, so we can talk about it at our next board meeting, but there really is some exceptional teaching and I'm so appreciative of our staff and our teachers and so, it was just exciting to be in our buildings and to have, just to see the exciting things like Stacy Snyder is doing at Orange and Lowell. She's amazing.
And a Gold Star Teacher.
And she's a Gold Star Teacher, yeah, exactly. I guess I can say that now it's not a secret.
How many did we have this year?
Five.
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 That's a lot.
I don't have all their names in front of me, but I can get them.
I think, if I've looked at, we had as many as the rest of the community combined.
Yep. So. I bet we can come up with the names right now, so I got Matt Tobin at West High.
Yes.
And at East High, it was Justin Decker. At Orange, it was Stacy Snyder. At Bunker, it was Rafael Benitez and.
Antonson.
And, and at Lou Henry.
And.
And at Lou Henry, it was Antonson.
Antonson.
So, yeah, that's the most Aster that we've had, I think. That's a lot, yeah, so.
And on top of that, though, I have known lifelong teachers that have been nominated but never received it.
Sure.
And they do a really excellent job, too. They just never have gotten that award, so I think, excuse me, all of our teachers, for the most part, I would say, are golden.
Absolutely. No, then, that's why I brought it up, was to say, we should value and thank all of our teachers. It's a great, yep, worked very hard, so. And are you guys done reading these books? Can we, are we good?
I'm sure.
The rest haven't come down, so.
I mentioned that he's going to be at West High May ninth.
Oh.
Yes. For this reading.
Uh-huh.
So, I'm really excited. Coming here to help some people here about a few years ago.
His illustrations are fantastic, but just Kwame will be here May ninth at West High.
Nice, okay. Perfect, what time in the afternoon?
Uh, no, it's in the morning. I think it's like ten-thirty, ten to twelve.
Okay.
I'll be there.
I'm just a little.
That's the day of our luncheon. Yeah, that's the day of our school board luncheon.
This is.
At West. So.
Well, we can kill two birds with one stone.
Yeah, that's exactly right, so, all righty then.
May seventh, excuse me, May seventh. Tuesday.
May seventh, okay, all right. All right, well, then, now that you've all seen the books.
I have an addition.
Okay.
I think Carrie Chapman-Cat, because she's from Iowa and this region.
Right. I'd have to be in that book. There we go. All right, so, read your books and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Somebody.
Second.
Second.
Madam President, I'm, I'm out of agenda, I'm out of the sequence, but I wanted to just make a comment, if I could, about the Waterloo Career Center.
Sure, certainly, sir. You get your three minutes, just like everybody else, if that's okay.
Okay, all right. Well, I didn't know how long your meeting was gonna take and I didn't want to impose on people, but thank you, board members, for having the foresight.
Can you give us your name and address? Quick, sorry.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Bob Manning.
Thanks, Bob.
Twenty-nine oh-eight, West Third Street, Cedar Falls.
Thank you.
And, um, we're, we've been lucky enough, the home builders organization that I'm the executive officer for, has been fortunate enough to be one of the advisory groups to the sustainable construction class. And, um, when, I know that you've heard a lot of very positive things at the, at the Waterloo Forum that was held in November, September, October, something of that sort. I was recently at a Waterloo, at a, a fairs, skilled trades session in Des Moines where they'd set up shop for, for all these businesses to display their, their techniques in doing their business, many of them computer-operated. And this, this jobs fair or skilled trades fair was attended by twenty-five hundred kids in the Des Moines and surrounding areas. They came as far away as, as council bluffs and there were some other groups that were well over a hundred miles away. But this is something that the home builders are gonna work on bringing to Waterloo, Cedar Falls, next year and it certainly ties in well with the Waterloo Career Center and, but my purpose in wanting to say something tonight was just to say, would you all take just a couple of minutes and pat yourself on the back? I, and I'm serious, I want to see every hand go over their shoulder. Okay, there we go, all right. Sue didn't, uh, okay. You know, but it's, the foresight that you had on putting this plan together and, and has been tremendous and you're bringing on very, a substantial amount of new classes every year. I think you've added three or four this past year and about six this next fall or, or something of that sort. And, um, so, we just very much appreciate what you're doing. The skilled trades in our area, in the home building business, we are sorely lacking enough people that want to be into that trade. And the number of houses being built in the Waterloo, Cedar Falls, Cedar Valley area is limited by the amount of, of labor that we have. There's a demand for more housing than there is labor available to build it. Qualified labor that, you need foremen and you need the people that started out carrying buckets of concrete for, for your boss and stuff. And so, at any rate, I wanted to just say, now, you can do this all the way home if you want, because you only have to have one hand on the wheel, but.
Thank you, Bob.
Certainly.
We appreciate that.
Thank you very much for what you're doing.
You can stay, you can stay, but you just have to, I'm gonna give you your three minutes, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure, you bet. Thank you very much.
Stay right there. All right, so we have a motion on the table to adjourn. Sorry about that, we have got a little out of order tonight, but that's all right. So, I would entertain a motion, yes, first and second. All right, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Thank you and good night. Thanks, Bob, for those kind comments. And you can keep talking now.
Very appreciate it.
Very appreciate it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna keep talking as long as the president invited me to. There was also, one of your members was at Rotary today, where they were recognizing the seniors that are graduating, the, um, the high, high-qualified, uh, seniors. Yeah, yep. And, and the person that you had there is sitting right to your right. And she does such a good job of talking to everybody there and making everybody feel good. Um, I want to tell you that you're very wise in your decision to, to have her here and to have her, uh, continue.